I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Yes. So we'll jump right into this is an exciting evening with a lot of wonderful people here that we want to recognize, so I will turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Yeah, so, welcome everybody and good evening. It's really exciting to see so many of our talented student athletes and their coaches here tonight. We had an amazing, amazing winter season with wonderful team accomplishment and individual accomplishments. So tonight, we're going to stop and recognize some of those notable feats, and so I'd like to ask Mr. McCormick, who is hiding back there, to come forward, and we're going to acknowledge core groups of student athletes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrison. It's not that much, the print has gotten a lot bigger, so I can see it, so it's, my notes aren't that long, but it's a great opportunity to recognize our winter athletes here. As Mr. Hanna said, it does feel like winter, I think I saw a few snowflakes outside, so it's appropriate that we are recognizing our winter athletes tonight. And it was a tremendous season, both team-wise and individual-wise. So we'll start first with Winter Track, who is coached by someone who's no stranger around here, Dr. Scott Mosenthal, and assisted by Mr. Barry, who could not make it tonight. And we're going to recognize four members of that team, and we'll start with Max Forte. Max was a long jumper, and he was the Class C sectional champion, he was also the league champion in the long jump. He had the longest long jump for a ninth grader in New York State this year. He also was a league champion, sorry, he also finished second in the 55-meter high hurdles, and third in the high jump, both in the league meet, but was, is being recognized for a Class C sectional champion in the long jump tonight. Max?
Great job. Good job.
Congratulations.
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 Next up is Adama Ahmed. She was the girls' Class C sectional champion in the shot put, as well as the league champion in the shot put. She also participates, I think, in some sprint relays, so she's a multi-event person, and she's being recognized tonight for her Class C sectional championship in the shot put. Adama. Our next Winter Track athlete couldn't be here tonight, but he's no stranger to coming to these meetings. Luke Carmassino was the Class C sectional champion in the 3,200-meter run. He also was the league champion in that 3,200-meter run, and took second place in the 1,600-meter run. He also was the sectional champion in cross-country in the fall, so couldn't be here tonight, but a nice hand for Luke Carmassino. And our last Winter Track athlete, again, no stranger to coming to these meetings, Zoe Maxwell. I know that, I'm saving that. So Zoe, league champion in the 55-meter, 300-meter, and triple jump, Class C sectional champion in the girls' 55-meter and the triple jump, second in the 300-meters. She qualified and competed in the state championships in the 300-meter, and she's being recognized tonight, obviously, as a Class C sectional champion, and it's her birthday.
Happy birthday.
Congratulations, happy birthday.
Congratulations to Dr. Mo as well, who's coaching.
I would mention, Dr. Mosenthal's done this for the last couple of years. In his retirement, I doubt he would have thought he'd be spending long days at the Armory and Rockland Community College, but thank you so much for your efforts.
Great job.
Next up, we're going to recognize two wrestlers, both who were all-section selections. First is Aiden Daly, just a sophomore this year, finished with a record of 22 and 10, was an all-league selection, and an all-section selection. He's also a three-sport athlete, was a runner-up in the sectional finals, but being recognized tonight as a all-section selection, Aiden Daly. Joel compiled a 30 and 11 record his senior year, and amassed 60 wins over his junior and senior year. He was an all-league selection and sectional champion in the 120-pound weight class, which sent him to the New York State Championships. He's the 14th sectional champion in Irvington wrestling history. He's going on to the University of Chicago and intends to wrestle there, being recognized as a sectional champion, Joel Andrade. Also like to recognize in attendance tonight, their head coach, done a fantastic job with the wrestlers, always asking for more, Brian Bernaducci. We're going to recognize two juniors who were all-section selections this year. First up is Sidney Thible. He averaged 13.8 per game, 14 rebounds, and two blocks. He was named to the all-tournament team in the Michael Tuohy Tournament. He was also an all-league, and he's being, all-league selection, and he's being recognized tonight as an all-section selection, Sidney Thible. Our next basketball player is Colby Martins. He averaged 19.5 points per game. He was an all-tournament selection in the Michael Tuohy Tournament, as well as the Hendrick Hudson Tournament. He was a Class B sectional all-tournament selection. He was the league MVP, as well as being all-league, and he was an all-section selection, Colby Martins. Joining them tonight is their coach, Scott Brennan. As I mentioned, the team was league champions with a record, overall record of 19 and 4. They finished second place in the Tuohy and the Hendrick Tournament. They won two playoff sectional games to reach the County Center this year, and he was voted Section 1, Class B, Conference 3 Coach of the Year. Coach Mar for the okay to go ahead, we were waiting on one more coach, but we'll start with the players. Girls' basketball is our last team being recognized tonight. Again, no strangers to coming to these meetings. Girls' basketball team had an amazing season this year. They were the league champions, they were sectional champions, they were regional champions, and they were state runner-up. They finished with a record of 25 and 2. We're going to recognize each of the members of the team, they're going to come up for their certificates, but one note, I would say, when I go around and see all my colleagues and stop in and see many people who see our girls' basketball team play, the one thing they always talk about is the amazing teamwork. So, as each of these players are called up, every person works together in this team, and I know Coach Mar has many sayings, but she believes they act as one, pulling on the rope, I believe, as one, and it's never more evident than when you watch them play. They move the ball, they pass so well, they are truly a team. So, we will call up each member of the team and recognize a few individuals along the way. First up, Katie Laboon. Grace Thible. Next up, I don't think she made it tonight, Nikki May. Next up, Miranda Farman. Couldn't make it tonight. Mia Mascone. I think the rest are here. Eva Gilbert is here. I think our next member is not in attendance, but I would like to recognize Abby Conklin, who is all-league, all-section, and she was voted to the Class B sectional all-tournament team, Abby Conklin. We have four seniors that are left, and they've become known as the Core Four. Just a little bit of numbers on the Core Four to give you some perspective on the last four years. Pretty impressive. Four league championships, four sectional championships, three regional championships, and two state final appearances. Overall record over the last four years of 94 and 8. So, these four seniors had a number of individuals awards as well. First up, Mary Burton. Mary was all-league selection, she was all-conference selection, she was a Section 1, all-academic selection, she was selected to the state all-tournament team, and she received a sportsmanship Next is Heather Hall. Heather was all-league, all-conference, and also voted Section 1, all-academic, Heather Hall. Our third senior, Olivia Valdez, all-league, all-section. She was voted to the state all-tournament team, and she's going on to play lacrosse at Merrimack College. Our final senior, Kelly Degnan, all-league, all-section, and MVP of the Class B sectional tournament. She's going to play basketball next year at SUNY Plattsburgh, Kelly Degnan. Finally, the coaches, I think Coach Mar would say she could not do anything without these three assistant coaches, and they truly act as a family and a group. To see them in action at the games is remarkable, to see how they work so well together. One of, two of them are former players. The first one is Lisa Bucci. Another assistant coach, who's also the JV coach, but is at all the Mar City Games and contributes so much, not here tonight, but Michael Toolen. And I would call this person Coach Mar's right-hand person, although she's not here tonight, she's trying to get here. She's picking up her son, and those kids are around at all, and that's more to the family atmosphere that Coach Mar has at her games, but a true value to the team, and that's Barbara Constantine. So last is Coach Mar, and she's not going to like this, but I got to read some numbers because they're truly amazing. And I owe her because she gave me a hard time about the bus going up the states. That's right. So the last nine years for Coach Mar, nine league championships, eight sectional championships, 11 regional championships, four state championships, three federation championships, and a record of 215 wins and 18 losses. Gets better, we go for a career, and we won't go into how many years. 22 league championships, 18 sectional championships, 13 regional championships, five state championships, four federation championships, and a career win total of 698. Pretty amazing numbers, but I think if you asked any of the coaches around the league, throw all those out, a better person, Coach Mar.
So, for your photo, come over here, we don't want you looking like you're stuck against the wall. We'll get out of the way.
Can we lift the screen up?
Yeah, can we do the screen?
No.
Go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Exciting.
Is this one? I don't, I don't, you like, good for you.
Somebody, somebody left something.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
You guys were really fun to watch. Really, really fun to watch.
How were you guys doing?
Thank you.
I got the whole house here at 7:06, I have your guys at 7:30.
Thanks.
How did you guys do?
We lost.
Yeah, well, no, but you have a contrast too, because you've got Eva right there who's still.
It was so much fun to watch, that team.
You hold it well.
Were you there all along, Aaron?
She just walked in.
Because maybe Sidney Thible was right in front of you, in which case that was, so maybe Sidney Thible was right in front of you.
Hi, congratulations.
Hey, Dahlia, congratulations. She's the best.
Well, that was a lot of fun, Dr. Harrison. So, we're now going to move to From the Past to the Future, with the 2018-19 Proposed Budget, which we spent a good amount of time reviewing and discussing. We may need to close the door. Thank you. Showing promise. So, Dr. Harrison, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanna. Appropriately stated, the past to the future, but when we go back and think of the last two board meetings today, well, the student recognition today and all the academic recognition at the last meeting, this is why we do it, right? And thinking about the great accomplishments of our students, this is just a few examples of that. As promised, this is a quick presentation this evening that is recapping what has been a thorough and really strong process this year, that has been grounded in our vision for tomorrow, and thinking about those principles that we want to make sure that we're focused on at all times, to ensure that we're providing the very best for our schools while keeping a watchful eye on the tax dollars for our community. And in doing so, we kept a close eye to our strategic objectives that were linked to so many of the conversations that we had, and to any of our residents watching at home. If you go back and look at previous presentations, you'll see the correlation between our strategic objectives and many aspects of our budget that we've developed this year. As Mr. Hanna indicated, it has been a long process, where we've certainly worked through a number of months to arrive at the point we are today, when the board will adopt the final budget that will be voted upon by our district residents on May 15. When we think about where we were going back only one week ago, we had a couple of adjustments that we had to integrate into this final budget, as highlighted before you. The first was an increase in state aid, the second was a reduction in the campus late bus, which also, not only was it reduced from four, from five to four days, but we also agreed that we're going to look at this as a pilot program and evaluate it mid-year. And then there was one modest little adjustment that we made in push-ahead numbers, as Carol was fine-tuning things. And then finally, with these remaining funds, we're looking to invest them in our school safety and security initiative this year. So with that said, a summary of the considerations that have been worked into the budget for this year, and I think the one thing that the board and administration and our community should be proud of, is looking at the balance, that we're investing in students with some new opportunities, where you are finally able to look to deliver on our vision for K-12 Continuum, a project Lead the Way, with an addition of a K-2 program, and lots of focus on our facilities, and of course, some focus on our finances by looking to invest some money towards tax certs. I do want to note that where you see the double asterisk around security initiatives, where we see a figure of $86,175, to draw your attention to the bottom of the screen, where the total that the board is investing in security initiatives exceeds $122,000 in the 18-19 school year. That said, I've reiterated the point many, many times, that this is a very tight, very conservative budget. We're going to have to be cautious as we move forward, and over the last few meetings, I've drawn attention to the areas of special education, tax certs, and facility needs as areas that we need to have caution moving forward. The one thing, as I said before, but this does align with the vision, and it provides for so many different aspects to deliver a well-rounded, very responsible budget, again, touching on so many important aspects of the school district's operation, beginning with the alignment of our strategic goals and objectives, all the way down to making sure that we have compliance with the New York State Tax Levy Cap. Here's a calculation of the cap, with the allowable increase of just more than $2.2 million, and our projected revenues for this school year, and you can see an increase of $2.247 million, looking at a variance of 3.8% for a total proposed budget of $61,348,175. And the expenditures, which of course align with our revenues that are forecasted for the 18-19 school year. A visual to highlight where our monies go, and when we step back and look, and the point that we've made on numerous occasions, that almost 73% of the funds go directly to personnel. So you can see that almost all of the money that we have goes directly into the classroom for the folks that are responsible for delivering the education and those for caring for our school buildings. We've also broken down our expenditures by individual function areas, so when you look at those larger categories to get a sense of where the growth resides each and every year, this is something that's important to look at. You can see the one negative that stands out this year, which is debt service, where we've seen a reduction of 15.4%, which obviously helped to offset some of the additional increases that we've discussed throughout the process. A quick visual to help residents calculate their taxes for this coming year, utilizing this year's estimated tax rate, and an overview of our budget trends, to look where we have gone through the years, again, looking at really what has been a lot of conservative budgeting over the, over the past years. So we, in some, we, numbers that were already referenced before, and looking at the total budget amount of $61,348,175, percent budget increase of 3.8%, and then the tax rate, which is 1941. We always have to keep in mind a contingent budget, and this is kind of the ugly of a budget going out to a school vote. If the, we went out to our vote in May, and it was defeated by the voters, and then there was a subsequent no vote in June, we would move towards what is called a contingent vote. And in doing so, we would have to make significant reductions to our school operations, and it would require us to make cuts of approximately $2.2 million, and we would only see, as noted, a growth in our budget of approximately $24,000. This would be a horrible scenario, recognizing the things that we need to cut would be things that would be all the extras outside of the classroom. We couldn't purchase any new equipment, so think of technology, think of facilities, think of resources that are coming into the classrooms on a regular basis. We would only be able to utilize our buildings for community use, outside use, in emergency purposes. All other areas, we would have to look at reductions in student programs, so you would have to think outside of the core initially, and look at extracurricular and co-curricular programming, and then begin to consider elective offerings. This would be horrible, as it would change the Irvington that we are so proud of today. However, we hope that we will never find ourselves in this position. We have seen support from our voters for many, many years, and we are hopeful to earn their trust and support once again this year. So tonight, as we said, is the adoption. On May 1st, there is a hearing, no formal presentations, started 7:15, and with a quick hearing, and followed by a regular Board of Education meeting, and then the all-important day of May 15, the budget vote and trustee election. We begin our roadshow tomorrow. Carol and I will be visiting with the PTSA to provide a similar overview of the budget for this year, and then there's a number of other opportunities for community members to come and learn more about the budget outlined here. But additionally, if folks have any questions, there are lots of resources on our website that you can review, and you can always email us at budget@irvingtonschools.org. Reach out to any of the administrators or trustees who would be glad to answer questions. Thank you.
I don't know if the board is aware, but Carol's presentation at PTSA is very popular. I went last year, and you had a packed room, if I remember correctly.
We have seen support from our voters for many, many years, and we are hopeful to earn their trust and support once again this year. So tonight, as we said, is the adoption. On May 1st, there is a hearing, no formal presentations, start at 7:15, with a quick hearing, and followed by a regular Board of Education meeting, and then the all-important day of May 15th, the budget vote and trustee election. We begin our roadshow tomorrow. Carol and I will be visiting with the PTSA to provide a similar overview of the budget for this year, and then there's a number of other opportunities for community members to come and learn more about the budget outlined here. But additionally, if folks have any questions, there are lots of resources on our website that you can review, and you can always email us at budget@irvingtonsschools.org. Reach out to any of the administrators or trustees who would be glad to answer questions.
I don't know if the board is aware, but Carol's presentation at PTSA is very popular. I went last year, and you had a packed room, if I remember correctly. It's not always the case for a budget presentation.
I'll remember to shower tomorrow. All right.
All right. So really, at this point, if anybody has a final thought they'd like to share, because then we'll move forward with a vote to adopt the budget. Before we do so, any last thoughts? Okay. For those who happen to watch on video, we have had a number of discussions over the past couple of months, so I can refer you to those to see the types of questions, and there's also a number of documents on the website beyond tonight's presentation that people can look at. So can I get a motion to adopt the 2018-19 budget?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote? Great, let's make it special. Do you have a preference in which order I go? Yes. There we go. Maura.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
David. Catherine.
Aye.
And I will say aye as well, and I was, so I wanted to, I forgot to mention that Deb Hargraves was not able to join us today, but she's been a great participant in the process. But congratulations in the process, and thank you to our administrators for leading that process. And on we go to a hearing and a vote on the 15th of May at Main Street School from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Looking forward to that. So next on our agenda, we have the property tax card. Is there any discussion or presentation, or we just note that it's?
Required document. Yep.
Okay. So we would vote to approve this?
No roll call.
A no roll call? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the 2018-19 property tax report card?
So moved.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have our consent agenda, which includes a vote on the BOC's budget and trustees, and that's the extent of that. Can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda?
So moved.
Great, can I have a second? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so that moves us rapidly to the conclusion of our meeting. Is there, certainly doesn't look like there's any interest in public comments, so we're going to move to mention that our next meeting is May 1st, a little earlier than typical at 7:15 p.m. here in the high school, middle school presentation room, where we will have a public hearing on the 2018-19 budget. And that's a wrap. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Do we want to go into, yes. Yeah, actually, we have one item to discuss in executive, so we'll keep it short. I know, I know, I know. I'm making a call.
Audible.
An audible. So can I get a motion to, no, yeah, to go into executive for the purposes of discussing employment history of particular persons?
So moved.
Great, can I get a second? Maura? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I was valuing troops against you.
Yes.